Hello everyone and welcome to this webinar today. I'm Francis Seeley from Global Net 21 and Enfield Voices. Now, what we're going to do today is look at how local authorities approach the issue of climate change and sustainability. Lots of local authorities across the UK and across the globe in fact have declared climate emergencies, but they have all done it in different ways. And some of them have done it very superficially, but some of them have done it in a way that you can develop indicators of success. Now, we're going to look at one model and it's a model called Donut Economics, which was developed by a lady called Kate Raworth and she's written the book called Donut Economics. Now, one of the areas in the UK that's pioneered this and it's doing this, so you know, it's interesting to talk to them is Cornwall. And we've got Alex Rainbow here today who's going to tell us about that. He's an officer in Cornwall and we may even have someone else joining us from Cornwall, Mark Holmes. But we're waiting to see, that's the sort of surprise where he comes on. Anyhow, Alex, thank you for joining us and it's great that you're here. Could you start by telling us about your role in Cornwall and what it is you do?
Right, yeah, so I am a carbon assessment officer in the Carbon Neutral Cornwall team at Cornwall Council. So my role is twofold. One side of it is to look at our projects and policies and how they're developed. And if necessary, do carbon modelling for them. So what are our emissions tied to things and that helps us with our decision making. And the other half for the last year has been to help develop and embed the decision wheel tool that we have, which is what Francis is referring to here in terms of our effective embodiment of donut economics into our decision making system. So that's where I am.
Okay, so you do that job and you're trying to develop what you call a donut decision will. Why have you chosen that particular model? What was the sort of inspiration behind it for you?
Mark will be able to answer this one better, but it was, but I do have some background in it. I wasn't part of the strategy team when it was developed. However, when we started developing this tool, there was no concerted decision to bring donut economics to the centre of our decision making processes and to sort of evaluate our work through this. Originally, we designed a basic version of this tool as a practical impact assessment for some very specific stuff around housing. And this was just sort of the inspiration of someone who's now currently on our team. But once we developed it, we saw that there was generally a potential for taking the tool, the idea of the tool and its graphic representation. And Kate Raworth does this so well in terms of donut economics. It gives us a really good graphical representation of how to assess the impacts of the decisions that we make in terms of our ecological overshoot and our social undershoot and where we're not finding that balance between providing enough for a social foundation and not exceeding our ecological ceiling and sort of dividing that into sectors and it produces this wonderful graphic. And we realised at the time that this might be a way to actually finally in some coherent way, incorporate a lot of the different areas that we wanted to into decision making that we weren't really doing before. So things like greenhouse gas emissions or various social justice indicators or wider environmental ones, which as I said, we weren't, there was no codified way of testing our decisions against them. And this provided us with a model to allow us to do that.
Maybe if I put up the will, you could explain to people, because some people will know about Kate Raworth, some people will have no idea and when they talk about donuts, they think of going down to Krispy Kreme. So maybe if I just put it up and you could then just explain what the donut will is.
Sure, sure, yeah. Oh yeah, there's a good one. So Kate Raworth, it's a fantastic theory and she's an economist. And this was an economic theory that she developed as an opposition to sort of linear economics, where we measure everything by sort of economic growth and we don't really factor in a lot of the more long term thinking that goes into trying to create a sustainable economic development model. So this is her take on what sustainable economic development model is. And what it is, basically, it says that if we want to provide for ourselves and live a sort of a comfortable life or provide a social foundation, as she refers to it, we have to do some level of harm to the world. We have to extract resources from it if we're going to be able to continue developing in a sort of just and fair way. But the planet itself has these sort of boundaries over which if we cross them, we're no longer doing this sustainably and the world is unable to support that financially, that sort of economic and social development. So finding a space between these two, this safe and just space for humanity is sort of the aim of this, the aim of donut economics. And it's to look at all the various factors that are outlined here or whatever set of factors you want to look at, but these are the original Kate Raworth ones, to look at those and see where as a society, we are either not providing enough to meet our social foundation, creating a life that people want to lead, or we are in the process of overshooting our ecological ceiling. And at some point, this is no longer going to be sustainable and we actually damage our ability in the future to develop economically.
So you can see there on the particular illustration I put there where the overshoots are. And it's where the overshoots are that people have concern. Okay, so you've shown what the model is and you've talked about it, haven't you, in some of your websites and so on? As an alternative to a linear economy, what does that mean?
Right, so in a linear economy, and I'm no economist, economist, I can't pronounce it. I'm not economist, but a linear economy is one where the principal measure of success is something like GDP or economic growth. And it doesn't really take into account all of the rest of the factors. And it's a sort of generally a more short term approach that looks at those sort of immediate returns. And those are traditionally found by extracting materials, using them and disposing them in this sort of linear fashion. And then we progress in, in theory, we progress economically, getting richer and richer and richer. But we're ignoring all of the sort of long term things that are going to come back to bite us in the behind. Like if we destroy our biosphere, for example, that's not going to do well for things like future agricultural production. If, for example, if we're changing the climate, this is an example of it. And that's going to lead to a lot of economic stagnation and eventually collapse. So donut economics is a way of just saying, we need to check all this just to make sure and we need to in some way attach a value to these things that we traditionally attach the value to, like the sea.
Okay, okay, so what you're trying to do is make sure all the services that Cornwall does does not impinge on the planetary constraints of sustainability in a number of areas. And you look at housing and you look at education and you look at all the services that you do. And you try to make sure they do not shoot out over those planetary constraints. So you've designed it, haven't you, to make sure that the net impacts of decisions are in all those areas? Now, how have you defined those areas? Have you just taken what Kate Raworth has said or have you looked at the particular areas on the inside of the donut? The services that you deliver and identified key ones that you want to measure?
So I'll just take it back a little bit. The tool that we've designed isn't quite designed to look at where we are overshooting or where we are undershooting. That's a much more complicated thing. And we are working on a project with Exeter University to do that, where they are assessing where we are. But the tool that we developed, we wanted something that we could test a decision that we wanted to make against whether it would be harmful or beneficial in the areas we identified. So to adapt Kate Raworth's model, we looked at the zones that she had or the segments of the wheel that she had. And we thought, if we want to turn this into a tool that people in the council can use, we've got to adapt it so that anyone can sort of understand it. And there are a lot of titles in there which might be a little confusing to people. They're not necessarily straightforward ones that people would get. So to a degree, we adapted them in sort of nomenclature. Further to that, we looked at what our principal policy drivers were. You know, things like environmental growth is a key policy for us and where we have power to affect change in some way. And what many of our major strategic decisions and even practical project related decisions, what areas they could influence and what we wanted to make sure that we were getting right. And so we adapted it, added new segments into it. So things like renewable energy, that's not in the original one. But because it's something that is a really key thing for us to develop, our projects need to sort of pick up on that and make that a separate thing rather than just sort of lumping it in with climate change. And also it's something like climate change adaptation, which is another key area we're moving into. We wanted to add that in. So it's all, it's all sort of adapted from that original model. But the way that we use it is slightly different from how Kate Raworth envisioned using donut economics to plan long term economic trends.
Yeah, well, she says that people will use it in different ways. And you've used it to look at different projects, haven't you? I mean, there's a thing called the Saints Trail and you've developed a will for that as well. I think I actually do have a picture of that. I hope I've got the right one. Do you want to explain what the Saints Trail is and how you've used that model for that?
Grand, yes. So Saints Trail is a series of bike lanes, cycle trails, let's put it that way, that cut across the Cornish landscape. The idea is that they are in part something that we want people to use as sort of an educational, recreational, house related thing, but also it also improves the cycle infrastructure across Cornwall so that people can get around rather than having to rely on cars so much. It sort of skips across both of those, those different areas. This particular version of the wheel is right back to our very, very first one that we had. And it's not largely changed from what Kate Raworth had put in. It's developed quite a way from there, but this essentially is close to what it looks like now. How we used it, and this is, our initial use of this wheel was for our highest level strategic decisions. So our cabinet level decisions, anything that was sort of quite big, that needed a full cabinet to go in and assess it and make a decision. This would be used at the end of the project and quality planning phase to demonstrate the impacts that we were having across these areas and provide that. This is a sort of summary to the decision makers as to what impacts we expected to see. In the case of the Saints Trail, this meant we've got all of our impacts there. So we expected it to sort of lower greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution by bringing down the number of car journeys for those people who are going to be using it for transportation rather than recreation. We thought it would improve in the inner wheel, improve access to services. That's what connectivity is about. It might provide a few jobs, probably not very many, and better access to the local environment, which is what that one is, and some associated health benefits from people having better exercise or better access to outdoor exercise. We figured it would be quite good for education as well, because we wanted to put education stuff on the trails, talking about the history of the area. And, but it also would come with some potential negatives. So we're cutting, for example, like these saints trails are going through areas where we're converting some wild or managed land into cycle paths. So there's some level of biodiversity loss, like fragmentation, habitat fragmentation, trying to minimise it. And we also, we also thought, well, this could provide a sort of a route for criminals to move between areas that they couldn't traditionally do so before. So there was a possible impact on community safety through putting in these. And how we use the wheel is that behind each of these segments, there are a series of questions that we ask. So for example, with air pollution, one of the questions that we'll ask is, will this lead to a permanent or temporary rise or fall in the number of vehicle journeys if we go ahead with this project? And you know, with an associated negative or positive, more car journeys being bad because it leads to more air pollution and less being good. So there's a lot of these questions, usually between one and six questions per segment that people will ask themselves. And as I said, our newer version of this wheel does look a little different from this.
Okay, the other thing is that you thought the will would be good for tackling climate justice, didn't you? I mean, there are quite a lot of areas of poverty in Cornwall and you wanted a climate change strategy that dealt with that. And you think the will is an adequate way of doing that?
No, no, not at all. The wheel is something that sort of sits slightly apart from our climate change strategy. We did, we have a climate change action plan that we published. And one of the 123 actions that were listed in, I think it's 123, was to develop this wheel because it was, it was a way of codifying the need to examine the climate change impact of any decision into the major decision making process. So it's a little part of it. Our climate change action programme is much, much broader than this, but this is one little aspect of it. And to be honest, we effectively tagged this into our climate change action programme, sort of tagged it onto it. One, because it's useful, but two, because despite the fact that the vast majority of the wheel is not about climate change, although obviously everything is interlinked and climate change will have a big impact across many areas, it's not really explicitly about climate change, but we tagged it on there because climate change is a really great way to sell what you need to do at the moment. So it was sort of initially branded the climate change wheel despite the fact it's not very focused on climate change.
If you have, you're working with the University of Exeter, as you say, and if they develop quite good measurement metrics, indicators, then it does become fairly central to climate change, doesn't it? Because then you have some idea of your success.
Yes, so that is a separate, that is a separate project where they are looking, say, the University of Exeter are looking much more directly at the sort of more Kate Raworth centric version of the wheel, where they're measuring how we're doing, whereas the tool that we have is really just to provide a graphic. Or like, it gets people to look at decisions through a lot of different lenses that they went before, one of which is climate change, but there are many, many other ways to look at that.
That's quite interesting because it's almost likely doing a step by step incremental approach. I mean, you have, you have climate change strategy, you have the decision will. But if you work with Exeter and so on, you can actually bring your local authority to make it a very comprehensive approach to tackling the problem.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We've enjoyed a long and fruitful collaboration with them. They have an environmental and sustainability school about 10 minutes from my house here in Penrind, which makes things a little bit easier. And we have a lot of cross funded projects. We're working at the moment on another tool, which is looking, it's a demonstrator at the moment, but it's looking at climate change adaptation specifically, so not mitigation. But because this is an area that we haven't really got policy developed and we don't have a good evidence base. The fact is, we don't even really know what climate change will do exactly in Cornwall, like what we expect climate change to do. So part of what they're doing is modelling it to give us the information for us to be able to start factoring that into our policy decisions going forward, because we don't, we don't really know what the effects are.
But that's interesting because I mean, lots of local authorities do climate change policies and it's all based on mitigation and there's no adaption. And in some cases, there's no climate justice, there's no whole borough or whole county policy. So you know, working with Exeter on the donut model, it helps you to provide a basis for that, which is good. But your councillors, how did you sell it to them? Because if I were to go to some councillors and say, right, we're going to have a donut economics model, they'll say, well, they have, they laugh and they send you down to go shopping for donuts and all those sort of jokes. So how do you sell it to them? How did you get them on board? And so that they could use it within the context of their own decision making?
Firstly, firstly, we didn't go to them and say, we want to adopt donut economics, because we would have got exactly that reaction. There's no two ways about it. It's a trendy term, it feels like, maybe lesser than it was a couple of years ago, but it's still a quite a trendy term. So what we went to them with was, what we went to them with was the tool itself, once we'd developed it. Because ultimately, really what it does is it gives them this really sort of easy to access, easy to understand window into the potential impacts of the decisions that they're making from a much broader set of perspectives than they previously were used to. And they really like this. We didn't, as I said, we didn't go down there with some grand presentation about how we're going to change economic theory. We just, we use the tool as a way of bringing donut economics into a sort of practical thing that they could get their hands on and you know, and it's a rag rated thing as well. The version we use at the moment has like red, orange, grey, light green and dark green. And everybody just gets that. And as I said, we've changed a lot of the titles so they'll be easier to understand. Like ocean health is what we have instead of ocean acidification, for example, because that means, you know, you have to explain to the council. So for ocean health, they kind of get, yeah, healthy fish, not destroyed. And it's this sort of easy thing to get behind and they've really, really liked it. And now all of our cabinet reports have this, you know, this is the decision you're making. This is the impact that we have, that we expected to make. And they can, they can go, oh, so what does this yellow bit mean? What does this mean? And the people are presenting it, they can ask questions of them, they're a bit more prepared for it. So we haven't had any real trouble selling it. And from there, the use of this tool and the familiarity of this tool is now feeding like directly the structure of it. The different segments are now feeding directly into our top line policy. But at no point are we explicitly saying, we are going to do donut economics. We don't, that's, it's more like, it's definitely an adaptation of it. It's not the exact original economic thing, because that's not quite what a local authority does, is plan the economy of an area. It has a hand in it, but it's a lot more practical and people based. So we never, we never did sell it to them. I mean, they might be unaware and to be fair, we've got a whole load of new councillors coming in now anyway. We've just had a change of administration. So we've got to brief the new councillors on this. And again, we're not going to sit there and say, we're all about donut economics, but it's fundamentally in our, in our strategy now.
But I mean, you show them the diagram and you don't have to call it donuts. And as Kate Raworth said, show them the diagram, show them an illustration and you're halfway to winning them over, which is really, really important. But how do you get them then to move from looking at the diagram, accepting it, seeing its potentialities, to then embedding it into every department of the council?
So, yeah, so the decision wheel is now quite widely used across the council. As I say, it was initially only at the highest level of decision making, but we've got a new version of it, which is a lot easier to use and it's all online and flashy and all that. And that makes it a lot easier for people to use it. We've been training project managers up and the way that we really want to use this is not retrospectively at the end of the project planning process, like, oh, it's got to go to cabinet, do a wheel. We want to, we want to put it into the business case phase so that it's fundamentally there, helping to influence the shape of policies and projects as they go forward, right from the beginning. So that people can sort of, what's the word? There's an ambition to make the wheel as green as possible, always being honest. But making, trying to, you know, you set up a project and you go, oh, I hadn't really considered that about air quality or whatnot. So now I've got to answer these questions and maybe I need to do some mitigations as I develop this project and policy and push it forward. Beyond that, our big sort of principal strategy documents for the organisation, which talk about our values and the way that we will prioritise everything in the future. It's called Prefilled War Bath, it was good in War Bath, we've got two of them, it's a Cornish word. But they themselves have gone to this wheel as like a starting point for how we articulate the values, how we want to go forward. So that's in our central, in our core now. We're rolling this out as well, the decision wheel tool into things like budget setting, so testing changes to our budget through it and into things like procurement and commissioning. So that it extends, or like these sort of values extend outwards through our influence into the wider economy of Cornwall. So we have a lot of suppliers and if we design a tender, if we test the service that we're designing against that wheel, then it's sort of getting out there and what we ask people to provide for is.
So I mean, apart from whether it's to do with sustainability or whatever, it's an incredibly good model, isn't it? And you can tell me whether it succeeded in getting people to think outside of silos. It gives you a much more holistic approach to making decisions in Cornwall. People are not fighting over their silos in the way they might in other local authorities. Have you seen that happen in Cornwall? Have you seen them break away from their silos and make decisions in a different way?
Yes, definitely. It's not, I think, I think people expect whenever they bring in a new tool to what they're doing, that things will change overnight. But it's a subtle change that's not necessarily one that you'd immediately see. But when people are doing a wheel for their project and they kind of come across a hole in the data, like there's an impact and they know it's there, but they've no idea what it really is. And like, for example, our future estates plan here, which is looking at what estate we want to have, what buildings we want to have open, how we use them, where we might need to build new buildings, which ones we want to close and sell. And the effects of COVID over the last year in terms of people's working patterns and how we look at our working patterns, how much we work from home and whatnot. When making that decision, running it through the wheel, it was determined that we were most likely going to have quite a positive impact, maybe on climate change emissions, because they had to answer the questions in the wheel, like, is this going to raise or lower your GHD emissions? But there was no way to accurately really answer that. Like, nobody really understood what those impacts would be. So the estate team are reaching out to both the transport team and the carbon neutral team to build some models to assess the hole in the data that showed up. And that's where it's really driving, where it's really driving across department working, is understanding that what they're doing probably is going to have an impact, but they have no idea what it is. So they have to ask around to be able to do this and they have to start working with other people in areas that they wouldn't have traditionally worked. But as I said, it's subtle, it's not, there's no sort of big hand holder thing. And especially since most of us are working from home at the moment, it's, it's, it's cross silo working is a little strange. It's broad or individual silos.
But it's really quite interesting because how you get people to work together like that is not always easy. And I mean, how do you get these integrated decisions made? You could say you do it in cabinet, but cabinet's not always the best place to do it because they often discuss other political issues. Do you have a sort of task group, a sort of Praetorian card, who actually sort of sees us through this integration and tries to get everyone to think in the donut way? I mean, how do you actually organisationally make it happen?
I don't, Mark will be able to answer this one better. As far as I know, there's no sort of overall coordination to make people think that way in particular. But because the don't, because the decision wheel is a required thing for initially one level of decision making, not the highest level of decision making, but it's being sort of phased in down those decision making levels. Because people have to do that, it's sort of getting into their, into their general working practices anyway. We have a tool which effectively forces them to do that and it will force them to talk to people in different departments if they need to know things. One of the most interesting psychological effects of this though, rather than it, rather than I think it, you know, it is reading across department working, but a really interesting psychological effect is that it's forcing people to confront their overt optimism about things and how damaging overt optimism can be in decision making. And I'll explain that a little bit further. Like, nobody out there, this is a strange analogy, but nobody out there wants to think of their, of their child as being a murderer. It's, but you know, their child, the thing that they've created can possibly have, can possibly do bad things. And this is the same when it comes to sort of projects and policies. People pour their heart out into it. And when they initially do an assessment of it, it's very, very difficult for them to see that they might be doing negative things. Donut economics has that built into it. It says that you are going to have to probably do some bad things to get a greater good overall. But forcing people to go through that process where they critically assess the negative impacts of something that they're doing, which they think is overall good, is a very transformative process actually. And because it's the negative things that we really learn from. But forcing people, and the wheel does force people to look at, if you're going to answer those questions honestly about, is it going to increase, I don't know, car journeys? There is going to be a negative there. Is it going to increase pressure on sewerage systems or aquifers or all this kind of thing? If you're building a thousand houses. And just like a good example is like, if we, if we look at building, say, a thousand homes, we expect that to equate to approximately three quarters of a million additional car journeys per year. If you build a thousand homes, that's what you'll do. But getting people to factor that into their equations when they're looking at building homes, this is the first time it's really happened and sort of forcing them to go, oh, well, actually, yes, whilst we might provide housing for a thousand people, that's going to cause some serious issues for air quality or greenhouse gases.
So it becomes a good instrument for cultural change as well, which is, which is really, really important. But you know, we're talking about how Cornwall handles it in terms of the local authority. But you take it out to civil society as well, don't you? I mean, I looked at donuts and donuts in Cornwall, apart from the donuts. I got, I found that lots of civil society groups are beginning to use it as well. I mean, how have you sort of disseminated it out? I mean, how have you sort of disseminated it out to civil society so they see its value as well?
Again, this is a big one for Mark, but in his absence, I mean, he, he can't join us, may have realized by this point, he's been trying, but he can't. Um, uh, we do have, we've mapped out, um. The sort of layers of influence that the, that the council can have within, within our society. From, from sort of the top levels where we set policy and we basically tell people what to do. And our own internal structure, which we have good control over. Beyond that, we have these various layers where we. Say, for example, with commissioning, I talked about this briefly before, but, but if we want to. If we want to, to sort of further this idea, we're not only going to have to design our services, again, testing them through our, through the, the donut effectively. You know, is this, is this going to be good for air quality, what we're asking people to do? Um, but also upping what we require in terms of not just green credentials, but solid. Plans from, say, suppliers that we have to do something about specific social justice or environmental. Things within the donut that we have, you know, within the service that we've, we've created, that's tested by the donut. To get them to sort of contribute to that in a way. So for example, we might ask them, depending on the size of the contract. Um, and the nature of it for, uh, an inventory of their, of their greenhouse gas emissions. Doesn't have to be a complicated one. And then a solid plan from them, not only how to improve their own, um, uh, organizational emissions, but for, but also say. If they have any, like, as part of their tender response, is there any way that they can see to innovate, to make our proposal? Better than, than we can. Like, we realize we're not going to think of everything that makes, to, to, to make a proposal better for social justice or the environment. So as a requirement, they're having to come back and say to us, uh, yeah, and, and, you know. This is what we're going to do to further the sustainability of this or social justice outcomes of this particular tender. So we're trying to extend it that way. We, we have used it in a few community fund applications, so our community infrastructure levy fund. Uh, we asked people who are bidding to do sort of environmental projects from, from the fund that we had, I think it's from landfill is the fund, but. Um, we asked them as part of their application process to complete a decision wheel and say, what are the impacts according to this? Of your project? What do you see being the, the impacts? So sort of getting it out that way. We do a lot of, uh, direct communication into the community and through things like the LET. But it's, uh, it, it's a little less coordinated. Um, than say internally where we've been doing this. Um. And I think we've been, we've been largely waiting to make sure we're doing this right to really sort of push it out beyond. Our borders in a more coherent way. And also trying to figure out how we do that.
Yeah, but, but, you know, from what I've seen, the ripples of it is going out into civil society and, and that, that's really good. And you, you're, you're trying to create an inclusive partnership, which is good as well. But I mean, what, what, what's your view of how it will develop going forward in Cornwall? I mean, you talked about your. Cooperation with the University of Exeter, you're going to look at indicators and metrics and. A more sort of profound way than you've been able to do, uh, up to now, because you've had to get the basic model. You know, accepted and understood. So do you have a, a, an idea of, a vision of how you're going to go for, go forward on this?
Uh, well, we, we are currently deep in, in the development, well, actually, we're at the end of the development of our latest version of, of this. Model, which is what we're going to use to, to, our decision making tool, so that we can extend that. Much more easily and much more readily down through the entire decision making process in the council. Um, and that's taken quite a while to be able to develop an, an app. So this is an app, you can access it through our intranet. Rather than it being the old, we have an old spreadsheet, which is what we use for, for the previous version of it. But this will allow it, people access to it. We're also looking at this being an open source. Thing when it's developed, hopefully, no, no firm decision on that, but I think it's, 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 it's going to be a part of our principles going forward, that we're not looking to restrict. What we do with this. Certainly our original version of this wheel with just basically a series of questions and a spreadsheet. That's freely available and anyone can have that if they want to start basing.
Okay, well, that sort of brings me to the last question, because we've got to, to the end of this is. Anyone can see it, you said. So how do people find out more about what you're doing? And if they wanted to contact you, how would they? I mean, maybe you don't want too many, because you get so many people, you know, contacting you. But, I mean, if people wanted to find out more, where would they go? What would they do?
Uh, we do have some information on this on our website, but, um. If, for the public, but, but if someone from, uh, um, especially a local authority or a large institution. Wants to talk to us directly, then, then they can. We have a, a climate change, um, email address at the council, which. I'm sure I have somewhere. Just give me a sec while I try and remember what that is. Um, uh, this is, Mark would, Mark would be better answering this one.
Well, it's okay, you can send it to me and I'll put it up and.
Oh, yeah, that's probably, that's probably, probably best. But yeah, people, but yeah, I'd, I'd welcome people to, to send me through, uh, an email and we can have a chat and possibly a talk in, in the future. Um, and as I said, we do have some stuff on the, on, on the website about this, but, but now that we're finally getting our new version of this, the decision wheel out there. Uh, and we are publishing a lot of our much broader, like, top level strategies in, over the course of the next. Couple of months, it's going to take, contain a lot of information about this and sort of set out. Again, not explicitly saying, this is how we adopt donut economics, but it, it has a lot of those principles, like. Built into it very obviously, it's very much there, um, throughout the, throughout the sort of organizational values that we will be, we'll be going forward with. So they can engage in it that way, but as I said, that's a little, that's, that's still a few weeks or possibly months off. Again, not my, not my top.
Okay, well, you know, um, we'll follow what you're doing, because it's really interesting and I like the way it's developing. It's a sort of developmental model. And you're doing it incrementally, step by step, learning from it. And we can learn from you and that, that is, you know, really, really important. And I think lots of people will find it interesting. So, you know, thank you for doing it and for answering Mark's questions well as, as well.
You probably would have given a lot better on.
No, no, I, I think you did really, really well for that. And, and also your own questions, which was great. And I, I mean, it's given us an idea of how you're developing it. I'm sure if we disseminate this as we will through Facebook and on YouTube. People will be really, really interested in it. So, I mean, it has been, I think, very enlightening. So thanks for doing it, Alex, and doing it, uh, doing it solo as well. Um, you know.
Thanks for having me.
Well, you know, thank you for doing it, you, because I know you do it with so many people and that you make yourself open and available, I think is a great credit to. To you and to Cornwall as well. So thank you for doing it and we'll end this interview now.